We'll be led to the pledge by Kyle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kyle. If you would silence your cell phones, that would be great. And meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly over on the left. And if you need a listening device, Robert will help you. With that, we'll jump into routine business.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Tucker.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any changes or corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of 8/27/2013 and the joint minutes of 8/27/2013.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve both of the minutes. Any corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three is to approve the bills in the amount of $1,295,901.18.
Is there a motion or a second?
Any corrections, changes, or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barth.
Today's bills include nearly $1 million in highway department expenses, a lot of it for asphalt, et cetera.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? If not, motion's been made in second to approve the bills. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
I'll move routine action.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning.
Item B is to recognize volunteers and county government for August 2013.
I have the county volunteers. This month, we have about 207 different areas of Minnehaha County, so I want to thank them for their service.
I threw out, Carrie.
Should we back up one?
Yeah. Recognize significant employee anniversaries for September 2013.
It's a day after holiday. We got excuses.
I'm glad you're feeling lenient, because I've got a couple of things for you. Delvin Ross, who's a corporal in the jail, is celebrating 15 years of service, and so is Daniel Friedbauer, who's a juvenile correctional worker at JDC. So I want to thank them both for our 15 years of service. We also have James San Garof, who's a civil process server at the sheriff's office, and Colleen Aubrecht, who's a legal office assistant for the state's attorney's office, both celebrating five years of service. So our thanks goes to them as well.
Thank you, Carrie. Obviously, we love the dedication that each one of those brings to the group experience, and county government is very helpful to all of us, so thank you for that. And with the... Can we go right to the volunteers?
Sure.
The volunteers also are an incredible asset, with 200 volunteers that chose the dedication of the volunteers to support the quality of life here in the county. We appreciate that also, so thank you.
Item D is consider a motion to approve a salary increase for Darlene Johnson, the assistant auditor for the auditor's office, from 2103 to 2105.
And here's where I need to ask for your understanding. We apologize, but we have an error on this. We're actually asking for a two-step increase to be effective on September 4th, not September 14th. The reason for the request is additional responsibilities that Darlene has assumed in the budget process, as well as after conducting an equity review with other similarly situated employees, she's a little bit further behind than we would expect, so we're asking for approval on a two-step increase for her.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, or a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Darlene, we sincerely appreciate your dedication to the... All the items that you are responsible for, especially during the budget process. We abuse you during that. You and Rich are incredible resources to us, so thank you. And I believe we are going to look at Rich's job description also, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you again.
Thank you.
There are no application for abatements today. The next item is notices and requests, is to authorize a county auditor to publish a request for proposals for development and installation of a pavement management system project, MC 13 PBMS. DJ Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioner. DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. This is, I guess, the culmination of a project we've been working on for several months and discussed throughout the previous budget hearing session for 2013. We've talked about pavement management and asset management for quite a long time. You've seen the degradation curves that we've shown you. This RFP is for the county to acquire a system that will establish those degradation curves for road segments to allow us to make better decisions on pavement preservation and ultimately reducing the lifetime lifecycle cost of our pavements and choosing the right project at the right time. We will be soliciting for a contractor or a consultant to provide us a software system, an online software system, that we'll be able to use to run through different scenarios and also to evaluate our pavements, to input a whole bunch of data into that software package. So if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Questions for DJ?
DJ, when we originally discussed this, this is when, I believe, you first came on board, this is something consistent in the industry, that they're using this type of planning software to help facilitate, you know, when we're going to have to do basic repair, maintenance, upkeep.
Essentially, every state in the United States uses this for their DOT. Most large municipalities, all metropolitan-sized municipalities, will use something. In the state of South Dakota, we're a little bit behind the times as far as counties go, and so this will be probably the second sophisticated pavement management system on a county level. Pennington County has been using one, and so other states around it, Minnesota and Iowa, Wisconsin, all of their counties use some form of a pavement management system.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I would just congratulate you for getting this done, because frankly, having a formalized system versus all the information contained in someone's mind, so to speak, for a process that needs to keep up with not only the pavement, but also understand the degradation, if you will, of some of the highways, is extremely important, and the timing is always the most important piece, so thank you for doing that.
A lot of the things should go to Shannon. Something came up with him, so he wasn't able to be here this morning.
Right there. He just walked in.
Shannon put together this whole thing and has been in a lot of interesting meetings with the state and other organizations to get this thing put together.
Shannon, would you like to say anything about all your hard work?
I'd like to reiterate our excitement that DJ probably expressed, and also it's interesting to see how our roads are going to rate on a national basis. I think our guys have done a pretty good job of kind of choosing what treatment to do at the time. I think compared to other counties, I think we're actually better off than them. And I'll also add that the new authorization bill for the National Federal Highways Bill, MAP 21, requires states funding is going to be tied to performance. And so if you can't back it up with data, we're doing the right thing at the right time, the whole asset management kind of thing, that's going to be potentially an impact in the future. However, with the SWAT program, we're somewhat insulated from funding being tied to asset management. However, with this in place, we're going to be okay either way. And I will say that in the future, it will be required. So this is the right thing to do, and we're happy to move forward with it.
Thank you, Shannon. I appreciate your hard work. Just wait a second in case we have a question for Shannon. If not...
I'm sorry I wasn't here for the first part. I'll add one more thing. We talked to Cindy Hiberger a little bit, and I gave her a website, a link, that we just kind of are on the tip of the iceberg. There's a lot more to it, and if you kind of are a Curious George kind of person, you can go all over the website and just look at pavement management systems. The one I shared with Cindy was from New Jersey.
I did send it on to him. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at it, because I don't think I sent it till Sunday, so...
Yeah. That's just a good kind of overview, and then the further you get into that website, the more detail it gets, so...
Thank you very much. Appreciate your research and work. Any other comments or questions for Shannon or for DJ?
Make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish a request.
Second.
Motion and a second to authorize a request. Any other comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
There are no planning and zoning notices today, and there are no petition for compromise of lane. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
Anyone would like to make any comments about any item that are... Items that are not on the agenda, we'd like to hear from you now. Not on the agenda? Otherwise, we'll move to regular business, and I believe we're a minute or two ahead of schedule.
Four minutes ahead of schedule.
So we'll go to the next item.
Item 11 is consider a resolution relating to refunding outstanding certificates of participation and authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement and approving and authorizing execution of related documents. Bob Litz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the auditor's office, and I'm here today to request that we move ahead with a resolution for the refunding for the 2013A bonds that are out there. I sent... Ken sent Woody's report from the... From Dordie Company to you last week there to kind of an update of where we were at. And also, just today here, I went downstairs and found out that we have the attached drafts for the 14th supplemental declaration of trust and the 14th amendment to the lease purchase agreement. They just came in from Betsy Abbey from Indianapolis. So things are moving rapidly on this, and we'd like to continue that. So I'm here to ask you today to approve the resolution. And also, Tom Grimmon and Ray Woodson are here today to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions for Bob or for Woody or Tom? No questions? You guys did a good job of explaining it. We're waiting for the results, frankly. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to approve the refunding of certificates of participation review, I guess. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thanks, Bob. And ladies.
Thanks. We'll be waiting to hear for the number that you think we can be working with, so get to work.
You won't have the number before I tell you.
I know. Thank you.
Well, we still have a couple of minutes, so we'll move on to item 12, which is to authorize the chairman to sign amendment number one in the amount of $8,887 to the contract with JSA engineers for construction administration services on Minnehaha County Highway 142, pavement restoration and joint repair project. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning again, commissioners. Items 12 and 13 are somewhat tied together. We did the concrete joint repair project. The shoulders did not hold up. Partly, that was because they're old and there's only two inches of pavement. Secondly, they didn't hold up because truck traffic did not abide by the detour sign. We detoured trucks but allowed passenger car traffic to go through the route. Those things in combination led to, frankly, some isolated shoulder failures. If anyone's driven that route, it doesn't take much to figure out what that means, but there's some pretty busted up pieces of pavements ranging in length from eight to 20 feet. The majority of those are that. And then there's one section on the westbound lane that's about 400 feet of busted up shoulder. So the good news is it's a wide piece of concrete that they can drive on. Outside the white stripe, there's additional, you know, concrete, so it's not a fear of, you know, danger to the traveling public, but it is a fear going into the wintertime. We do not want our plow drivers having to deal with that shoulder. It could bust a wing. It could spin them into the ditch or worse, and it just needs to be addressed, so that's why we're here.
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions for Shannon? Commissioner Barth?
I would just comment that I drove on that area, and it is shockingly bad, those shoulders.
Any other... Commissioner Kelly?
The trucks you're referring to, are you talking about just the normal traffic?
Well, heavy trucks.
Are you talking about the construction trucks or...
It turned out that there was a paving job nearby, and so rung his trucks and...
I'm sorry, there was a what?
A construction paving job on another part of our county, that they apparently preferred this route. And so at the very onset of construction, we had paving trucks with asphalt going through their...
Ours or someone else's?
It was a private job. It was other contractors.
So why can't we go after them?
We called the sheriff, and they came out there for a while. Enforcement's always an issue when you have detour signs, but by then it was too late, Mr. Kelly. You know, that those shoulders had already busted up with that construction traffic, and then with the persistent presence of passenger car traffic, it just kind of needed the soft shoulders and continued to break them up in places.
So we knew who did it, but we couldn't prove that they did it. Is that...
I don't know if the sheriff wrote any citations, but that's why we called them out there.
Shannon, if there... Are there any questions? Can you just help me understand the whole issue of two inches of shoulder asphalt, so to speak?
Sure. Two inches of asphalt on a somewhat weaker base, a gravel base course, when the gravel is soft, and I'm sure this was probably not roadbed gravel, it may have been 15 or 20 years ago when that road was installed, it's probably more than that. I think that was an old DOT route, because it's concrete. The shoulders just don't get much attention. They'd never been overlaid. They had never been chip sealed. They were cracked already, just weather cracking, so when water, you know, rains and frees thought cycles, water penetrates the subgrade, frees thought cycles, loosens up pavements and as well as the subgrade, and so then you have a weak base. And so when you put the two inches of asphalt on top of a weak base, your asphalt's not going to hold up. In college, my professor was very fond of saying that the compressive strength of a hole is zero. And so that's basically what you have. You have somewhat of a rigid pavement, even though it does flex a little bit on weak base, and so it just doesn't hold up. That's why when we put new highways down, a minimum will be four inches.
Yep. Well, thank you for your humor, but thank you also for increasing the restrictions, if you will, and requirements for building. Ken, do you have a comment?
Not so much as a comment, but as you deal with these items, if you could deal with number 12 separately. But when you get to number 13, there are some things that you do need to be aware of. I mean, as part of your action here, you do need to recognize that, number one, an emergency does exist, and that, and you need to record that in the minutes, that you are told that this emergency does exist. And then when you authorize, you know, to go out for these informal bids, please remember that we need to bring these informal bids back to you at the next possible or the next meeting when those are available, to make sure that those also get recorded in the minutes in order to meet the statutory requirements of 518.3.1. So if you would deal with number 12 first, just as it's written, after you get to 13, you absolutely have to recognize that that emergency exists when you authorize going out for those informal bids.
Thank you, Ken. Does anyone else have any questions for Shannon? And we will go to 13 next.
I've seen it before, yeah.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize the chairman to sign amendment number one in the amount of $8,887 to the contract with JSA engineers for construction administration services on Minnehaha County 142, pavement restoration and joint repair project.
Second.
Thank you, John. Any other questions or comments? Is there... All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. And item 13.
Thank you again, commissioners. As Ken mentioned, and I mentioned also, the shoulders are in dire need of repair, and as Mr. Barth also witnessed, I will say that about 85% of the shoulders did hold up, but where it's bad, it's pretty bad. And so as it said in the briefing memo, we have an emergency situation. We do not want to go into the winter with the shoulders in those existing states. This time of year, it's very difficult to get contractors to bid. I have spoken with two informally, if they even have time or willing to bid, and they said, yes, they want to take a look at it. So I'm hopeful that we're going to get some bids. Secondly, that $50,000 mark where it becomes okay to do an informal versus publicly let and the emergency situation, it's right on the bubble. It really is. It's just going to depend on the bid prices come in. We have a construction estimate, construction engineers estimate from JSA. They used full, you know, prices for this time of year, so it's quite... I think their bid was estimate, and I think it was around $64,000. So I think it's right on the bubble.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Well, if...
Commissioner Kelly?
If we only get one bid, for instance, is it possible also just to cut to close that one lane portion of the road and wait until spring when so we don't get gouged?
I would strongly recommend against that, Mr. Kelly, because that's probably the third highest traveled route in our system.
Which one is it? Ward 142?
The concrete road of Madison, west east of Sioux Falls towards Brandon, between Powderhouse or Six Mile Road and Highway 11.
Okay.
It's a fairly highly traveled route. I think there's an excess of 4,000 ADT on that road, so I would strongly recommend not going to one lane.
Thank you.
And it's also a three-mile stretch, so that would be a long stoplight to, you know, let one lane pass.
Yeah. Thank you, Shannon. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize Minnehaha County Highway Department to solicit informal bids for emergency road shoulder repairs on Minnehaha County Highway 142, pavement restoration and joint repair project pursuant to South Dakota codified law 518.3.1.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Barth?
Is that recognizing the urgent nature of this repair?
I think it's an emergency road, so I think we're good. Do you have a comment, or are you just flipping your pen?
Just... So we're clear, under our statute, there exists a threat to public health, welfare, safety, or for other urgent and compelling reasons.
Yeah, I think that was part of my motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Making sure on the record.
Was that part of your second, Dick?
Oh, yeah. I heard that.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 13. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
I think we'll go back to item 10.
Item 10 is a public hearing to receive comments and input on the FY 2014 Minnehaha County annual budget. Ken McFarland.
Good morning, commissioners. As you know, you were required by law to adopt a provisional budget, which you did for the FY 2014 budget on Tuesday, July 30, 2013. As part of that formal adoption process, you gave notice in the paper and published the budget, and part of that notice is that you would conduct a public hearing on the things contained in that budget as part on September 3, as part of the regular county commission meeting, and that this is an opportunity for persons or other individuals to comment and provide input on this pending budget prior to your formal adoption of the budget, which is scheduled for September 24. And that right now, the budget stands at $68,671,401. It's supported by growth of 1.9 in property tax, 1.9% in property taxes due to new construction within the county and a 2.1 CPI adjustment, and there are modest increases in some non-property tax revenues, such as the bank franchise tax, recording fees, board of prisoners, and vehicle registration fees. As you well know, the budget includes three grant or temporary positions that are currently on staff in 2013 that are being authorized as permanent full-time positions, that include a deputy state's attorney, a deputy public defender, and the coordinator for the Judicial Detention Alternative Initiative. There's also two new positions, which include a human case services worker and an engineer in the highway department. And the budget also includes five proposed COs and one proposed deputy sheriff sergeant in the jail as you wrestle with the issues with detox and the sobering center concept. This budget also has a 1% increase from the county's pay plan for full and part-time employees, along with the normal step increase of 2.5%. Since your adoption of the budget, there is a couple of issues that we do want to bring to your attention, that you may want to discuss further. One is from the highway department, where we have a specific request to reallocate some of the monies that are in the highway construction budget, to move money between the business travel, education and training ASNs, and taking $1,000 each and creating a new ASN for safety and moving that $2,000 into that ASN. You also had a request from some of the commissioners to take another look at some of the capital outlay items that are included in the highway budget in construction for the automobile, trucks and tractors, trailers, heavy equipment, and the office furniture ASNs for those two budgets. The other thing that we really want you to be aware of, as we get closer to final budget adoption, the auditor, as part of their normal function, will calculate the impact in payroll of any, you know, resignations, new hires, et cetera, so that we will have the most accurate payroll information as we go into the budget. And so that number may change slightly to the new budget that we bring you for adoption on the 24th. The other thing, of course, we're tweaking some expenses. You know, we're taking another closer look at workers' comp, some of the building insurance, and that's, you know, based on more current information, and we will detail those for you when we bring them to you on the 24th. And then we're also taking a look at some final revenue numbers as well, you know, as we get more of a history, as we tweak those numbers the last couple of months. You know, we're going to have to make some adjustments, more than likely, for the DOC contract upstairs. You know, that's a revenue loss there. And we are factoring in right now our numbers for our centrally assessed property. That has an impact upon what our property tax collections will be, and our initial look at that is that those centrally assessed properties, we may have to tweak our revenue estimate down for property taxes to the tune of about $9,000, and that when we factor in those centrally assessed property values. So those numbers are becoming more clear now as we go through the process, as we're getting more information from the state. So like I said, the final budget is scheduled for adoption on September 24. This is the public hearing for other individuals, if they'd like to make comment on the budget or provide some additional input. And then, of course, DJ is here to answer any questions you may have on his request and the review of some of the capital items within the construction budget for equipment.
Thank you, Ken. DJ, would you like to make comments? No, please.
Morning, commissioners. DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. I just had received a couple requests for more information. The $2,000 for the safety ASN, moving $1,000 out of travel and training from the construction budget. It's just something that I would like to do to make sure that we have money allocated specifically for safety training in light of the injury that we've had this year. I want to make sure that our employees in our department know that we are aggressively attacking our need for training and safety, and I hope that I get commission support on that. And if we don't want to make another ASN, that's certainly all right. We'll definitely spend that money towards safety training, just out of our regular travel and training budget. The $910,000 that is in the ASNs for automobiles, heavy equipment, truck tractor and trailer, that is a sum of the dollar amount that was presented for equipment in the long-range plan for 2014. It includes two tandem trucks, one sweeper, two three-quarter ton pickups for the crews, one 30-ton trailer, and if we have budget available, we would like to change that to a 50-ton trailer, two stainless steel sanders, one skid steer loader, forklift, and one excavator with trade-in of the old excavator, and one highway mower. All of those items are in need of replacement based off of our... The present condition of them and also the length that we've had them in service to date, and how that $910,000 worth of equipment is broken up into the automobile or into the three different ASNs. Last time I checked, it looked like we had $75,000 in automobiles, $545,000 in truck trucks. $545,000 in truck tractor trailer, $290,000 in heavy equipment, and that is a total, like I said, $910,000. Whether we spend $60,000, $500,000, and $350,000 in those respective ASNs, I'm not sure. But that's just the list of equipment that we intend on purchasing in 2014 using those three different ASNs. At the end of the day, we know that our budget for the equipment is $910,000, and that's what, that's what the number is that we won't be going over. Also, I don't remember if Ken mentioned anything, but there was a request for more information on the $10,000 for furniture in our administrative budget. At the time our budget was put together, we had also proposed a new facility. And so I threw an arbitrary dollar amount of $10,000 into our budget for any furniture needs that would come up with the new building. Since that has not been approved, then the $10,000 for furniture won't be spent. We have, the last few years, spent a few thousand dollars here and there for replacing old desks, but we certainly won't be spending $10,000 on furniture next year.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I think I addressed the three items that Ken had briefed you on. If you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Any questions for DJ?
I'm just looking, DJ, at, you know, in our conversation this last week, and then looking back at expenditures on capital equipment, and there has been a half a million dollars increase in expenses in equipment, and maybe that's necessary. I just wanted you to bring it forward to show what things were on that list, because that list was not in our narrative that we went back to. I didn't have it, at least I didn't have that list in the narrative. I know it was a long, long time ago.
The 2013 budget was initially proposed, I think, at $750,000 or so for capital equipment. What we've done this year is we've put some pieces of equipment into the different ASNs. The three ASNs that I just discussed, those have been mixed match from what was originally budgeted. So I think a skid loader, for example, may have been in small equipment versus heavy equipment or heavy equipment versus small equipment. And so that list of equipment that was originally put into the 2013 long-range plan, we're still spending that $750,000 on equipment. It's just been moved around from different ASNs in what Sandy and I feel are the appropriate ASNs, as opposed of what was traditionally done with Bonnie and Bob.
Thank you, Cindy.
So I think for a lot of years from what Ken and other people have told me, we've spent between $650,000, $700,000, and $950,000 on equipment on a pretty regular basis.
Thank you. Bob, or Darlene, or Ken, is it difficult to set up another ASN for the budget, or is that just kind of a bookkeeping issue? No, it doesn't look like a big issue. Then I personally have no problem with the safety environment if you want to focus on that as a line item, so to speak. But you said $1,000 from travel, and where was the other $1,000 I couldn't write?
We have a travel budget and we have a training budget.
Okay.
So $1,000 from each.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
DJ, you know, I appreciate the fact that, you know, you have been acquiring new equipment and stuff these, since you came on board. But my recollection is that under your predecessor, that we would have, say, $850,000 in an equipment acquisition budget at ASN, and then we would spend $35,000 and carry it all over. And so, you know, I guess I'm not sure that we've really spent a million bucks a year in the past on new equipment. And I know the legislative audit people who came and looked at our stuff say that we have the most up-to-date fleet of equipment of any county in the state and better stuff than the state of South Dakota. I know that one of the other companies doing paving in the area says that we have the only paver with a cab on it in the state. You know, I guess I want to make sure we're not overdoing it here.
Well, we don't have the only paver with a cab on the top. It's not an enclosed cab, it's just a sunblock. And I think I remember when we ordered that, that the Commission said that that was a good idea for those guys that are sitting out in the sun all the time. I would agree that we have the best equipment, or possibly the second best behind Pennington County as far as counties go in the state. Other counties are more strapped for cash than we are, that's for sure. As far as having better equipment than the state, I'd love to take you out to Northern Truck right now and show you the 20 or so trucks that they're getting that are brand new, they're getting them put together. We're buying two new trucks this year, and we're putting them together ourselves. And so we definitely don't have nicer equipment than the state does. We do take great pride in the condition of our fleet. That's why we won an award last year for a top 100 fleets for county governments. Also, we have, I think I said, between $2 and $3 million of equipment that's beyond its useful life, that is in need of replacement. We have a lot of equipment that is in need of replace. That's the old stuff that we're replacing. We're not replacing stuff that's recently purchased like our new paver. We're not replacing our paver. We're replacing old stuff.
Thank you.
Other comments? Before we go to the public conversation, I will remind everyone that we have two budgets in effect. We have a general budget and a highway budget. Can't co-mingle or cross-pollinate those dollars, if you will. If we do, we'll all have free housing. And jail's already full, so there's no reason to add five more dummies to it.
We could build a nicer one before we go there.
The issue is, is that those are two separate subjects, and I do appreciate Ken and DJ's conversations about those. I'd like to open it up to the public for any comments that they would have. We would also like to hear from department heads if they have other comments or changes that they want to make. Anyone like to make any public comments about the budget? I see no one moving. Where were all these people that had comments earlier? Well, it's interesting to me, and I wish, we don't even have media here today, which is kind of crazy, but the whole issue of our budget, which we struggled through for months and months and months and spent literally hundreds of hours on, the only time we ever hear from anybody is when it's all over and they complain about what we did in a newspaper article, frankly. And it's disappointing to me that we don't have any input from the public about how we spend taxpayers' dollars. And I guess it's part of the process. We've all had the same experience in city government or state government sometimes, but it's, I guess I would like to see more input, and we haven't gotten it. We always, we'll get some critique later on in the process, I'm sure. But I do appreciate all the department heads who have spent literally as much time or more time than we spent on it, because it's a difficult process and it's no fun for us because we are on a very tight budget. And with the growth of public safety issues, I guess I would call, growing at double-digit inflationary dollars and with our tax limitations at 1.9% and our major funding source, this is kind of a train wreck at some point in the future unless we find a way to redistribute the dollars that are available. So I know that the state and the city both have reserve funds, even the school system on how they fund their particular sources, and we don't have those revenue sources. So that's the end of my sermon. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I think it's worth looking, in view of the articles on school and Airport Authority and some of these other governmental units, the public safety element of this, we have very, very little control over. And the school district, you know, they focus on students, and if they get an increase or decrease, they, for one year, have a problem, particularly with an increase, because they don't get the money until the following year per student allocations. But I think we did a pretty darn good budget considering the battle we have with public safety issues and crime, crime isn't going to go down unfortunately. I don't know where that came from.
Somebody's calling in.
But I do think we worked hard, and I think it's time that we blow our whistle that we did, we did get this thing balanced out, that we are still, we've got some cash to work with, and, you know, it's much better than it was in past years. And we have not had any significant increases. In fact, we've had decreases in things like board of prisoners on our revenue stream. So it's been difficult. But we have a different form than the other governmental agencies. And I guess I commend the department heads and Ken and Auditor's Department of really getting this thing put together.
Other comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Barth?
I guess I'd like to make a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. You know, just today, the Argus mentioned that the school district in Sioux Falls has a surplus. So we have the schools with the surplus, we have the city with the surplus, we have the state with the surplus, and we are barely getting by. We are barely getting by. This is a good budget. But, you know, we're faced with, in effect, a crime wave where last year felonies were up 28%. Where is the coverage of that in the Argus? 28% increase in crime. You know, we have leaders in our community who take full credit for, you know, adding flights at the airport or, you know, building swimming pools, et cetera. Where are they when the time comes to take credit for the increase in crime? Where are they when it's time to take credit for the increase in poverty? The school district says that over 50% of the kids in our schools, 50%, come from families below the poverty line. Where are the people taking credit for that? Well, the Argus was a hundred-eyed monster who, at one point, most of his eyes would go to sleep, but he'd always have a few open. I'm hoping they've got a couple open today. The one time when Hermes tricked him into having all of his eyes asleep, he was killed. This is a hell of a good budget. We did a great job. I don't agree with every single cent, but we did a great job. And I thank all of you, and I thank our department heads for squeezing every bit of juice out of a nickel. And I'm sorry the public isn't here. They will complain, but they should run for the job and try to do it.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? Again, this is a public hearing, and we'd be happy to hear from anyone about the budget that's been proposed with minor changes. And we will adopt this on September 24. Anyone like to make any comments? If not, we will move forward. One last chance. Okay? We're going to move forward. Item number...
Item 14.
14, thank you, Cindy.
Is to authorize the chairman to sign addendum to food service contracts between Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center and CVM Food Service. Todd Cheever.
Good morning, Commissioners. Todd Cheever from the Juvenile Detention Center. This is an addendum to a current contract each year based on the CPI. CVM has, increases their rate. This fits right into, right into the contract.
Any questions for Todd? Todd, what is the dollar amount again that we pay CVM for the meals?
Well, I believe it's about less than $2 per meal, but two of the meals, we get reimbursed through the federal school lunch program, breakfast and lunch, as well as a snack on school days. So it's, $1.98 is what it's going to be this year.
That's amazing.
And we also, you know, we reimburse for the snacks on school days. So we're not paying, we're paying out-of-pocket probably less than 60 cents a day to feed the kids.
Nobody's going to be wanting to spend time there just because the food's good. A buck 98 is an incredible amount. None of us will get by on that. Commissioner Beckus?
Well, and just to point that because these are juveniles, their caloric intake is actually higher than what we provide over at the jail. And that's also been accounted for as well.
Yes, that's part of the contract. I believe it's around 3,000 calories.
Right.
Plus, they're also providing an evening snack as well.
Correct, yep.
Good point. Any other comments? If not, I'd be looking for a motion. Let's go move.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract addendum. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item 15 is to consider a motion to accept a grant award from the U.S. Marshal Service for a new vehicle and place vehicle on the fixed asset list.
You don't look like Paul.
No. Captain Needham has been here this morning, so Kristen Tran up in the Sheriff's Office presenting, just requesting acceptance of this award. It's from the Warrant Task Force, the vehicle is. And we are appreciative of the U.S. Marshals to provide us this vehicle.
Thank you, Kristen. Any questions for Kristen?
Well, I understand this is an undercover vehicle, and it's an F-150 pickup. I'm pretty sure no one's going to spot that.
I don't think we want to tell them what the license plate number is, though.
No, we don't.
I spy. If there isn't any comments or questions, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the grant award from the Marshal Service. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you for coming.
Item 16 is the Commission Liaison Reports.
See, when they have any liaison reports? We'll go to new business. Any new business? Any old business? I just briefly will say that this morning, we spent, before we came into this conversation today, an hour discussing, I would say, capital improvement or capital needs issues for either the JDC, the highway department, or the...
Jail.
Jail. And it's an ongoing process and an expensive process that we all need to consider in our future needs of the county. And I hope that we continue to update the community on what's happening in those three areas, because they aren't going to go away, and we need to solve those issues. And we will be doing that over the next few months. And I appreciate the Commissioners' additional work in trying to make that solution less expensive and working hard to meet the need. So thank you for that. If not, I'd like to adjourn into executive session for personnel.
I'll make a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel.
Second. Thank you. Those in favor of adjourning into exec session for personnel issues, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.